To get started, calling the Wednesday, February 5th, 2025, School Committee meeting to order. First up is Pledge of Allegiance, flag is turkey.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The meeting is being recorded by dorm media. If anyone else is recording, please just let us know. First up on the agenda is the public comment period. Do have quite a bit of people in attendance from what we normally have. Anyone got anything? Moving on then. Second on the agenda is vote to approve the minutes from January 22nd, open session. Has anyone, everybody got a chance to review the minutes?
Yep.
Motion to approve.
So.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I was not here.
Thank you. Next up is the warrants, Ms. Cohn.
So can I read these if I wasn't here last meeting to sign, Jen?
Yep.
Okay. So I reviewed and approved the following warrants, January 22nd, 2025, $548,583.85. School payroll warrants, June 23rd, 2025, $155,026.87. We should enter them into public record.
Thank you. Next up, skin wrap updates. Benson and Antonio.
All right. Good evening, everybody. From the HAY, last week we finished up our two-week HAY PTO Boosterthon Glow Fund Run fundraiser. The Boosterthon is our glow fund run in the gym where we darken the gym with strobe lights and different colored lights. The kids run their 35 laps around the gym. The kids have an absolute blast, right, and having the best time with their friends. We are able to raise an unbelievably generous support and help of our hashtag HAY Nation community of over $24,000, which we are going to be using to continue to pay off our new playground from a couple of years ago. Finally, all paid $84,000. And we will use the other money for assemblies, enrichment ideas, fifth grade yearbooks, and other student-centered activities. Because the kids are able to raise above our 20K goal, Mr. G and Mr. Bellower will be doing something special for the school community in the past. Mr. G and Mr. B have been taped to the wall, patted the face, kissed a pig, and exotic animals, including an alligator and kangaroo, joused as knights, and wore purple slimes last year. These events are all turned into videos and celebrated at the end of the school year. Can't wait to see what this year brings us. The individual classes earn multiple incentives for meeting their in-class goals, which they will most likely be enjoying at the end of this week into next week prior to the vacation, PJ Day, extra tech time, board games, field trips to Halydo, and more.
And for the middle school, the students of NMS have once again begun work in earnest on the Playbook initiative. A select group of students composed of students from all three grades has begun the important work task to the students of the playbook and the school more broadly of working to make NMS a more inclusive and tolerant place for all students and members of the community. Students involved in Playbook will be traveling to Worcester next week to our partner middle school to conduct a workshop around building skills to combat issues of prejudice and discrimination. The NMS will be holding our annual Spirit Week sponsored by Suecom next week prior to the vacation. Spirit Week kicks off with our annual Blacklight Activity Night this Friday from 6:00 to 8:00. The boys and girls basketball teams are getting ready to wrap up their seasons next week. The boys team is enjoying their most successful team in the past 20 years, while the girls team is sporting a winning record as well. And finally, the NMS Drama Club has announced their annual production for the spring. This year's production will be Annie. Over 90 students auditioned for roles and the cast has been set. The dates of the show are May 21st, 22nd, and 23rd.
And then lastly, from the LGN, we celebrated Global School Play Day as well as World Read Aloud Day today, February 5th. The students had a lot of fun learning new games and listening to stories old and new. We'll be also celebrating the 100th day of school this Friday. That's all we have for you.
Thank you very much. Next up on the agenda is our Student Spotlight Series for the Norton Middle School Dialogue Divas Book Club.
All right, I'm gonna go stand up at the podium. Please come and join me. I think this is why we actually have this big crowd tonight. This is more people we've seen in this room in quite some time. Thank you. Oh, wonderful. So thank you all for joining us. Morgan, you guys gotta come up?
We were planning on talking.
That's all right. You can still be recognized.
She was still talking about us, too.
All right. So first of all, we asked the middle school, I love this, love the name by the way, Dialogue Divas, to come and join us tonight to be recognized along with their teacher, Mrs. Del Hall. I'm actually gonna read to all of you a little bit about the letter that I got from Mr. Hayward recognizing Mrs. Hall, and now she feels uncomfortable, but I think it's very important.
This is supposed to be a comfort operation.
Okay. It's higher time. It is with great pride and admiration that I write this letter of recommendation from Mrs. Hall, grade eight math teacher at Norton Middle School. Earlier this fall, following the enthusiasm expressed by several students after the school book fair, because who doesn't love a book fair, right? Mrs. Hall took it upon herself to create and lead a book club for a group of grade eight girls. This initiative centered around Louisa May Alcott's timeless novel, Little Women, was entirely driven by their desire to provide an enriching and memorable experience for students who sought an intellectual and social activity beyond their typical classroom experience. So this is something that I find so much fun. Oftentimes, as students get a little bit older, they lose their love of reading, and it's really such a lifelong skill that I love that you guys developed this book club. And so I want to invite you all here tonight to recognize you, to recognize Mrs. Hall for creating something that just sounds really, really fun. And I know you guys have something to share, but I guess I'm wondering, are you going to read another book?
Yes.
One month until the end of the year.
And what is the book you guys are currently reading?
The Summer Rules.
Well, we're good old schoolers. We'll be preschool next year. That sounds amazing. But come on up, and whoever's coming up.
Charlotte's coming for us, right?
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. I'm Charlotte. We are some of the members of the NMS Book Club, also members of Dialogue Divas. This club started at the book fair a little while ago. Me and Ms. Hall and Nora were discussing our love of reading. Ms. Hall offered us to stay after school one day with her and read. I decided to take it a step further and suggest that we invite some other members who also love reading to come and read with her. Ms. Hall loved the idea, and we started to form our own book club. After I got enough people interested, we held our very first meeting.
At our first meeting, we were really excited to start, and we went over some ground rules, one of them being that we would meet up once a month in the library. At each of our meetings, we would discuss our book and choose the next. We all would pick a name from a hat with a book on it.
I'm Sadie, and then after we selected our first book, which was Little Women, we took some time to read it, and then after a few weeks, we met up and discussed it, like our favorite characters, and we also, some of us selected our favorite quotes and then told them they were significant. And then some, like Ms. Hall and some other members, brought some snacks for us to enjoy while we watched the Little Women movie. And then once that was over, we selected our next book.
At our most, I'm Nora, and at our most recent meeting, we decided to do a, like a cook, we decided to all pick a cookbook and read it.
As well as?
As well as, we also read the book, The Summer I Chilled Pretty. We picked a cookbook and read the cookbook and chose our favorite recipe from the cookbook. And then on the day of the meeting, we all had like a little feast, and we brought in a ton of like, of all the foods that we made, and we shared why we liked the food and why we chose the book. That's it.
So it's really quick. It is such a joy to really work with these girls because I see them in a different light, very different light than I normally see them. In the math classroom, sometimes they can be very reticent or a little less confident. But boy, once you start talking about their positions on anything, they're very animated, they're very enthusiastic about discussing the books, the characters, the events that they might lay to. And what's really great is to see that even though they're very convinced of their own position, they're very respectful of the other person's position and willing to listen to that and not dig their heels into the ground, being willing to understand the other person's position even if they don't totally agree with it. And so it's been a great joy to really work with these girls.
So does anyone want to come up and introduce themselves? So I'm just gonna need to get it. So Charlotte, Sadie, Olivia, Nora, Michaela, Violet, Morgan, Isabella, and Kelsey. Congratulations, guys. This is awesome. I think that is the coolest, coolest thing I've heard in a very long time. I love that you also did the cookbook and had the feast. That sounds like so much fun. What was the cookbook?
Oh, we all chose our own.
You chose your own? Oh, that's so fun. Did you share what they worked?
Yes.
You really had a feast. Okay. Well, I'd really like to read, too. So if you guys are reading a book this spring, I'd love to join you.
We're going to select our next book and let you know.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Any good?
I love the Student Spotlight Series, but I think this one was my favorite one yet. Just kind of seeing this grow, you know, starting with the students, I feel, and kind of working itself up and, you know, we all know how technology can affect everybody's lives, phones and iPads and everything else, and to kind of go back to earlier times, if you will, I think is an awesome, awesome thing. So, you know, super proud and super excited to see how this, you know, club kind of keeps rolling along.
I couldn't love this more. I mean, you guys, certainly well spoken, too, tonight. You know, it's not easy to get up at your age and talk in front of a group of people, but very well spoken. And like your teacher said, what you girls are learning are life lessons, super important. So, and the only thing I would recommend is maybe inviting us to your feast next time because that sounds amazing. I never would have thought to read a cookbook and do something like that. So awesome job, ladies. Super proud of you.
Nice work.
Good. Thank you very much. Number six on the agenda, Project 351. We are going to move that to the February 26th agenda. We had a little conflict with getting scheduling squared away, so.
You guys don't have to stay for the rest of the season. You're more than welcome to leave. Thank you all so much. Thank you guys for sharing.
Thank you very much.
Now I'm back to our regular crowd.
And then they were great.
Frankly, scheduled programming.
And Mrs. Brown will be right out the door behind you.
All right, so some just given that one, and we will go to Stormy Brown for our first reading on the concussion policy revision.
I didn't prepare anything. Just myself, Nicole News, and Pat Sebey revised the concussion policy from the one from, I think it was like 2020-ish. Yeah. And we brought it to the Wellness Committee and got their opinions on it as well, made some minor changes to what the three of us did, and this is what we have. If there's any questions or any...
So I guess mine is, you know, is there, and maybe you know this offhand, if not, like, what's the Cliff Notes version of what's getting changed? Or is it just more language or?
I think it's less language. The last one was...
Because I was looking through it on my phone.
The last one was rather repetitive and wordy.
Okay, that's, that's how it was kind of going out.
So you guys actually have both copies here. The first, the current concussion policy is first in your pocket, and next to the title of JIF, I'm sorry, excuse me, JJIF, it says current policy in red. As you can see, this one is very cumbersome, and as Mrs. Brown noted, very repetitive as well. And so oftentimes, we are working really closely with families and with students, and they want to get back to play. And so we're working with that through the process. So this is definitely a streamlined version. It does not change the actual requirements of return to play for students. That's all based on recommendations. However, it's just a little bit more user-friendly for families and for us as well.
Now, do you know, Mr. Brown, are we seeing an uptick in concussions?
I don't think so. No, I think it's kind of status quo. I don't think it's, definitely not an increase at all.
Yeah, is it concern with just being, we're seeing an increase as our policy's still effective?
No, I just did our January monthly report, and we had one.
I mean, I sit on the Wellness Committee, and this was a hot topic, if you will. We talked about it for a little while, about trying to do it, obviously, with my career and doing what I do. At Bryant, we, you know, definitely switched around some wording, just to make it easier, I think was the key, you know, and then ultimately making it so it's user-friendly to read, but also the students and parents can understand it and understand the most important thing, return from concussions, obviously the stages and how those work, you know. And I think it just cleans up the language, if you will, for like, making it so it's pretty easy to understand.
Now, how often do we see new guidelines from like CDC? Is it just, like, I don't know, like, are we seeing, like, because like one thing, some of the sports teams are doing like the guardian helmets, or there's like a new technology with like the neck brace. It's like, are we seeing any new guidance, or is it just more kind of trial and error with, when it comes to, you know, prevention and things like that? Like, we still have the same...
I don't think there's really been any new guidance from the CDC in several years. Like I said, we just kind of follow mass law and, you know, it has worked for us in the past.
And the graduated return to play, that's all overseen and consistent from district to district, school to school, et cetera.
So is the final say a doctor or our nursing staff and trainer?
It's usually the doctor. It's just, it just gets tough when the kids don't go back to the doctor. So then it's more left up to the trainer and the nursing department. More the trainer, because especially unless it's a kid that was like a car accident or something, you know, not an athlete, then it's more up to the nurse if the kid doesn't get back to the doctor.
So with all policies, we do them as two reads. So this is our initial read. So if the committee has any questions about specific language or would like to see language adapted, this is the time for us to have that conversation. Otherwise, we would bring it back to you for our second read and vote.
Anything else from the committee?
No.
All good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You can leave now, too. Next up is the meal charge policy. Christine Eppert.
So this is very similar. It is just an update from an older meal charge policy. The current one that you have in front of, I think the new one is from 2017. And so this revised one is for new guidelines and procedures. And we've updated a bunch of language, pretty much to reflect the new guidelines that are going on right now in the state and the, also, sorry, including the universal free meals as well. I'll just do a super quick outline of it, just because there's a lot more in this one. The very first section is almost identical to the old. It's pretty much just the district's philosophy. It's very standard, almost every district has the same one. The next is new. We added key terms, and we thought this might be helpful because with the universal free lunch and breakfast, it gets a little confusing as to what's reimbursable, what's not reimbursable, off-car items, charged student accounts. And so after doing a lot of research and reviewing different districts, we saw this in a couple, and we thought it would be extremely helpful, especially when parents call and ask numerous questions on the, you know, new rates and the balances and whatnot. So the next section with the student accounts, we just, we added the universal free meals that's going on right now, where the state pays for the portion of the one free breakfast and one free lunch. And also, we added in this new section, which it seems a little confusing and a little contradictory, but it is also just in case, perhaps hoping not, but someday they are no longer free. This keeps it clear, it was partially in the old policy, and it just explains what our procedures are for students with free and reduced lunch versus students with full paid meals and what each of those means. The next section, we literally just combined language for the payment and low balances, just cleaned it up a little bit, and that also goes for the refund and delinquent account collection. Major purpose of the meal charge policy is just how does the district go about collecting the money, making sure that it's never in the school lunch account as a whole is not in debt, and what do we do about that if it was? So that's why it needs the different subcategories as well. And lastly, we decided to add the financial assistance because that does come up a lot if at the end of graduation, they have a low, they have a negative balance, and also to let families know that we will never deny a student lunch or breakfast with the inability to pay, and also, you know, we also always have donations accounts and different things like that. And the last new item is the non-discrimination statement, which I believe we already have on our website, but we have to include in our meal charge policy as well.
I like the unlimited fresh fruits and vegetables. I think I'm still up there.
What, I just actually got to know this, but, so when the state allows for a free breakfast and a free lunch to every single student, how do we pay for that upfront and then we get reimbursed? Or is it factored in as like what they do?
So we pay for, it's not per meal, it's more just for the supply, so to speak. So the federal, we get federal revenue for a, if a student is classified as free, we get that from federal revenue. What the state now offsets, that they serve for permanently free, is a paid meal. So if a student is on paid meal status, that is also free at the same rate as a free student would be that we receive with federal revenue, and they also get the offset of the reduced meal revenue, uh, meal student as well. Does that make sense? I know, it really does.
Sure.
All those words make sense. So I, so I guess then, when we pay, or what, what, shop bills, whatever, how does it,
like, does the state send, cut them a check? Or does it come through us, then we?
So we have to put in a claim each month, and what we do is the food service director and I go over every single meal count for breakfast and lunch for each school. We enter it online with Desi, and then they reimburse us based on the calculation.
Perfect. And then, Jen, you're gonna like this, but is this something else that Desi does, that you tell, we're gonna do 100% and then give us 70?
Not at this time. So right now, they are actually, they are fully reimbursing schools because of this free lunch program since COVID.
Perfect. That's, yeah, obviously. Um, in terms of when they started this thing. And then, I guess from a policy standpoint, is the reason kind of why we're doing this, because it kind of seems like everything's kind of current, but then is it because of all universal free lunch? I guess I kind of, why, why change the policy now?
I think because it's approaching 10 years of being an old policy, and yes, because of the pandemic and the new language of reimbursable meals and still charging for that second meal, especially mostly at the high school level, it's just good to have an updated policy.
So while students are guaranteed the free breakfast and free lunch, other items are not necessarily free. So for example, ice cream Fridays, or students that want a whole second lunch, we charge them for that. And so oftentimes, we have, get phone calls from parents and say, why is my meal account, you know, why do I owe you $150? And it's because your child eats two lunches every single day and only one of them is free. So putting things like this into the policy really help when we're having those types of conversations with families as well. That's not me that has those, that Christine's the lucky girl in that regard, but it definitely helps us to have those things in writing. And then, as she mentioned as well, the USDA non-discrimination statement is a requirement of our policy as well.
Perfect.
Okay.
Makes sense?
Yep.
All good?
So again, this is a first read. If you guys have anything that you have questions on or would like us to update, please let us know.
Thank you. Next is the second reading on the entrance age policy revision. Dr. Olivia.
Okay, so for us, this is the second reading, which means tonight we will vote on this entrance age. And as we discussed at our last meeting, this policy JEB actually is an attempt to reinstate language that was inadvertently taken out in the last revision. So we added number three back in, I believe, 2018, and unfortunately, at that same time, lost numbers one and two, which gave us the initial entrance rate age for kindergartners, but also number two, which talks about the initial admission of children in first grade. And there are times where we have families that their child doesn't meet the kindergarten cutoff, and therefore they may enroll in a private kindergarten for that year. This helps us to have a clear policy in terms of what that would look like for a child's entering grade one.
Do we, do we have to, or one, do we have a policy, and two, does it have to be separate for the preschool program? Or is there an age?
No, because preschool is, is, you know, it's three years old for students that are part of childifying, that are coming to get their specialized services, and then the peer models are three as well. And it's not a required grade level for us, so it's a voluntary program.
I know someone set this up probably last meeting. So if a student hypothetically comes from Born, they did kindergarten in Born, but they were born November 1st.
You had to be born, huh?
So they come from Born, they're born November 1st, and they started and finished kindergarten, turned five after August 31st, come to Norton. How does that work?
So what we would do is, number one, we would look at their kindergarten report card, narrative, whatever they have from their previously sending school to kind of take a look at how they did. We would sit down with the parents, have some conversations about their child, and then we would give them a series of assessments to kind of see if we believe that they are ready for kindergarten. I think the academic expectations are challenging now. It's very different than many, many, many years ago when I was in kindergarten and you basically had to play nicely with friends and use scissors, not at the same time. But, so we would do that, and we would have a lot of conversations just about the developmental appropriateness as well.
Well, I guess the, from the parent, we'd have a meeting, and there would be a potential that that student would be able to go onto grade one.
Yes, and the district's decision is the final decision.
Exactly. Okay. Any other questions from the committee?
No.
So now we can take a moment, is correct? I will entertain a motion of approval.
So moved.
Second?
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Five oh majority.
Thank you.
All right. And then I believe, sorry, and then, yes, last but not least, superintendent goals and mid-year update.
All right. So I think we did this a little bit earlier last year, so I apologize that it's already February, and I'm giving my mid-year update. So quickly, I have a few goals for this upcoming year. The first one is that in partnership with the school community, to develop a comprehensive strategic plan that establishes a blueprint for success of all墨的学生们 And as I humbly admitted in my narrative to you, this, this one's a little off-target. Unfortunately, I'm a little bit behind schedule on this particular goal. I began the internal process of creating a system and structure for this work. Families will be invited to participate in the Strategic Planning Committee this coming Friday as part of my newsletter, and they will be asked a few simple questions just about what they believe we're doing well as a school community and what are some areas that we need to work on. Students in six through 12 will be getting an email from Dr. O'Neil on Monday, asking those three important questions that I asked them all last year. Do you feel safe at school? Do you feel welcome and respected for who you are? And do you have an adult at school that you feel that you could go to if you had a problem? And asking students in middle school and high school those three questions is really eye-opening, and it was really interesting to see that information and data last year. So I'm hoping that we'll get the same response rate from our students. Finally, we will be sending out a similar survey for elementary students that will be a little bit more student-friendly, including pictures and images, and then family and staff surveys regarding our vision, vision, mission, and goals, as well as our portion of graduate will be shared the Monday following February break. So this completed plan, I can share, actually, there is the internal process, but you guys obviously can't click on that little link. I will share that with you as part of my Friday memo this week. The whole plan is lined up to have it to you in early June. So number one, I appreciate your grace and understanding that this is a little bit behind schedule at this time, but we will get that done into you as soon as possible. The second goal was my student learning goal. The second goal was my student learning goal, which talks about using a district-wide data review process that will include local curriculum-based measures, observations of teaching and learning, norm data and state assessments to take a look at individualized student action plans that will partner with our IMTS efforts to focus on student learning and attendance. This has been kind of a fun one. I have been able to visit schools and classrooms with our principals throughout the course of the month, each month in a variety of ways. Dr. Ackerman and I have also started learning walks in partnership with some of our building principals. During these walks, we focus specifically on particular grade levels, instructional purchase and curriculum alignment. One of the best things that we've done so far this year is we split the day between JCS and LGM. And what we did is we went and we visited kindergarten classrooms at LGM and kindergarten classrooms at JCS and third grade classrooms. And it was so interesting to see the parts of the day that were so in line with each other and the ways that they were different too. And so it actually has allowed us to have some really interesting conversations in terms of what are we seeing that's working really well? How do we streamline our expectations of all students? And do the teachers have the resources and materials that they need in order to effectively instruct? And so we'll continue to do that. And then the other thing that I can't take credit for this, but Dr. Ackerman and Mrs. Russo have been doing are these really great transition meetings where we're getting teachers together pre-k and kindergarten. What do expectations look like once they leave Little Nanters preschool and go into the kindergarten classroom? And how can the preschool teachers help to prepare them for those expectations? And they'll be doing that as well this year in third and fourth grade and fifth and sixth, and then also between Norton Middle School and Norton High School. We are doing a lot of data work this year. It's becoming increasingly prevalent in all of our leadership meetings and within the grade levels and department teams. Teachers explore how students are performing on critical grade level skills and then they take a look at how they can provide interventions during that scheduled time. Beginning next year, all five buildings will have an intervention block built into their daily schedule, which will allow students the opportunity to access both intervention and enrichment in their classrooms. One of the places that we've seen the best change this year is at Norton High School during the LLB block. This gives students, and there's so many different things that happen during LLB and I've got two high school students here that can maybe speak to it if they felt so inclined. But it's giving students the opportunity, so maybe if they miss school because they were out sick or they're having a difficult time, they're able to go and connect with a teacher during that time or maybe even connect with a peer or members of one of our honor societies for some tutoring and reteaching. And it's built within the structure of every school day. So it's something that all students can access, whether they're on a naive or not. And then also it gives it a great opportunity for some of our clubs and activities to get together during that time. For example, Best Buddies often does a lot of stuff during the day with, during the LLB block. We have also, as you guys know, been implementing some new curriculum programs in K to eight, which is really, really helping to provide that structure and high quality resource for our teachers. So making sure that they are aligned and following the program with fidelity. And then one of the things that I think we can do a little bit better on is taking that student level data and sharing it more widely. Teachers that are engaged with those students are constantly looking at student data. And my goal with, of course, with privacy expectations, is that we are able to share it with a larger staff and wider community to show progress that is being made across our IMTS S model. We have a lot of really great success stories of kids that are making great progress because of the way that our teachers are going above and beyond for them and then because of a lot of the work that we've been doing over these last three years. I would love to be able to showcase some of that in a way that protects the privacy of our students, but also can celebrate the great work that's happening. And then finally, my third goal is that new superintendent induction program. I actually had one this morning. So I've been to five out of six and the meetings so far this year, they're a mixture of virtual and in person. They have been a really, really great resource for me. Today's topic was how do I help build principals as instructional leaders? Because as the superintendent, I can't be in every classroom every day. And so it was a very timely topic and conversation based on the work that we're doing. I believe you guys have all met Dr. Wong as well. We meet virtually twice a month and, you know, during some of the crazy things that have happened so far this year, she's a quick text or phone call away. So I'm very fortunate to have her as well. Last year, we tried to get my evaluation done prior to school committee elections. So I will defer to all of you on how you would like to do that this year. But if there's a different additional information that you are looking for or would like to see other examples, please let me know and I'd be happy to provide them.
I mean, I think it's important to, you know, similar to last year and not previous years, but I think it's, it's best to probably do it before spring election because, especially this year, there's this potential turnover. But, you know, because I, it happened to me when I was elected, I'm like, I'm not that old. Because like, at that point, I, I'm like, yeah, yeah, everything's great. I don't know. So I think it's just that timeline needs to stick to, you know, March or, I don't even know, when's the election, end of April?
Usually the end of April.
So I mean, I think it's definitely to be, you know, in that earlier spring time frame just to, I mean, that's the best way to evaluate is your current.
Correct. Yeah, I think definitely has to be, I mean, whatever you're going to say at the end of April, you're probably going to say at the end of June. So to me, it would just make sense that we continue that process, especially with the potential of losing three members in one cycle here, that it would make no sense to have three new members potentially on this and then have only two people evaluating.
Yeah, because it would be a great evaluation for somebody new to come in and say, oh yeah, everything.
Like I abstained from the one we had on. So it makes no sense. Yeah, so I can obviously continue.
Sounds good.
Any other questions, concerns, comments? Cool. Just go ahead. That is it? Other business? Anticipated in 48 hours. Having a pretty good time in here. All right, and that'll do it. Thank you very much. Have a great evening. Sorry, motion to adjourn. I always do something.
All those.
All those in favor?